Good evening, this is Enid Lapelis, Chairman of the Monroe Town Council. Today is April 22nd, 2020, and the time is 7:00 PM. This is a special meeting of the Monroe Town Council. As is customary before the start of our meetings, would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please allow me to confirm the presence of those town council members and any other staff or anticipated participants are present and are able to hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. DeeDee Martin?
Here.
Jennifer Aguilar?
Here.
Jason Mauer? Jason Mauer? Terry Rooney? Terry Rooney? Jonathan Formicella? I can't hear any responses, Mr. Moderator. Tony Scott?
Here.
Okay, let me go back over. Jason Mauer? Terry Rooney? Jonathan Formicella? Sean O'Rourke?
John O'Rourke, here.
Kevin Reed? And of course, Enid Lapelis, I'm here.
So Madam Chair, I can see Mr. Mauer is present. I cannot hear him, so maybe we can have Mr. Mauer just make sure he can hear us again. I do not see that Mr. Rooney or Mr. Reed are logged in. I certainly did not hear them, but I also, I can't see everybody because there are some callers, but I do not hear Mr. Reed or Mr. Rooney identify themselves.
Can you see or hear Jonathan Formicella?
I can, and he did confirm that he was present.
Okay. So, correct me if I'm wrong, we're still looking for Jason Mau- you said Jason Mauer's here.
Jason Mauer's present, but I can't hear him, so let's just be cautious and make sure that he can hear us and we can hear him before we proceed.
Okay, sure.
He's nodding that he can hear us. Jason, can you say something? So we can, still can't hear you, Jason. He's giving us the finger sign to tell us, hold on, the good finger, not the bad finger.
Okay, so, we're still looking for Terry Rooney and Kevin Reed, correct?
I don't see that either of those individuals are logged in electronically, which I can see. There are, like I said, there are some callers, but if you want to just wait for Jason, then we can do a roll call again for those individual members.
I don't, but Jason is here now, you said, and you saw him, and we could hear him, he made the noise.
Jason is physically, he can sign language us, but since I'm not proficient in signing, I would not be able to read that, so we'd have to just make sure he can connect, because we cannot hear him.
All right.
He's still giving me the friendly finger, hold up sign. He gave me the timeout sign.
All right, Kevin just texted me saying he's on his way.
It's an interesting comment, being on your way to a free movie.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right, so, we're still looking for Terry Rooney and Kevin.
Hi, this is Jonathan Formicella, I just want to confirm that everyone can hear me.
We can.
Yes, I can hear you, Jonathan. Got you, Jon. I couldn't hear you before Jon, but now I can.
Okay. So, present.
That was Jason Mauer. He is now present and audible.
Okay, great. Any thoughts, Mr. Moderator, about Terry or Kevin?
Well, we have a quorum to proceed, so it's your meeting and certainly your discretion. If you have an expectation that someone's going to join, based upon the importance of this meeting, I would recommend giving a couple of minutes.
That's fine, I would give them time. One of them texted me, I think it was Kevin, to say he's on his way. It could have been Terry, because I just got the message and both names are on, so
Madam Chair, I just want to check again, because there are some callers that I can't tell have joined since.
Okay, all right. Terry Rooney, if you're here, please say aye. Kevin Reed, if you're here, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Kevin's here.
Okay.
So, we're still waiting for Mr. Rooney. Mr. Moderator, would you like me to at least go on to the staff member names and then come back and see if Mr. Rooney's here?
Again, it's your meeting, but, oh, there's Terry.
I apologize, I'm hearing it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we're going on. Okay, so, all town council members are present. Staff and other anticipated participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. First Electman Ken Kellogg?
Here.
Town Attorney Frank Lieto?
Present.
Tax Collector Deb Heim?
Here.
Director of Finance Ron Bonowski?
Present.
Board of Finance Chairman Mike Mandros?
Here.
I hereby declare a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted to and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www.monroct.org, for public inspection. I hereby appoint the Town Attorney Frank Lieto to serve as moderator of the meeting to ensure we are compliant with both state law and the Governor's executive orders governing remote electronic meetings. At this time, I will ask the moderator and Town Attorney Frank Lieto to introduce the rules of the remote electronic meeting. Mr. Lieto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you're all becoming familiar with this script, but I'm going to read it anyway. This public meeting is being conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B dated March 14, 2020, using go-to-meeting electronic conferencing technology. Using this technology, the public shall participate in real time in this meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, using the access information as set forth on the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so be sure that you have accessed the same, the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on a first-access basis and is not in any manner controlled by the Town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that we will not exceed the participant limit for this meeting, should it appear at any time that we are approaching the limit, so that any member of the public is denied access to the meeting, the chairman retains the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take notice of the following regarding this meeting. The meeting is being conducted in real time. The meeting is open to the public. That any member of the public may listen or view to the meeting anonymously. That the meeting is being recorded, and while we ask that you mute your microphone unless recognized to speak, anything that you may say, do, or may be displayed on your screen may become part of the recording. That the recording shall be posted to the town's website within seven days, and further that the town, the recording will be made available to the public within a reasonable time in Town Hall upon written request. As set forth on the agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. Any written comments from the public regarding any business which would otherwise be germane to the public participation and received between the date of the agenda was posted and one hour before the start of this meeting will be read into the record during the public participation of this meeting. I'm going to go over the ground rules of the meeting before I turn the floor back over to the chair. Essentially, we want to make sure that there is a clear, audible presentation and record so that we can have accurate minutes of this meeting. It's going to, this meeting will follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask that everybody observe the following special rules in addition. Please mute your microphone so to reduce the background noise at all times that you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, you have to clearly state your name for the record. The use of the chat function is prohibited and will not be considered at any time during the meeting. With regards to the matters of new business, we only have one matter of new business this evening. You're familiar that the chair is going to introduce each matter on the agenda one by one. Upon motion or resolution, the chair will ask for a second. After doing so, each member will be invited to comment by name. After everybody's had an opportunity to speak once, the chair will continue down the line in the same order until everybody has had an opportunity to completely speak on the matter, or it is otherwise ready for a vote. We're going to have a roll call vote, as we typically do. On the motion, again, the chair is going to call each member by name and ask that you vote appropriately and accordingly to the chairman's call. The chairman will then tally the votes, announce the vote, and announce whether the motion has passed or failed. Again, just ask everybody remembers to remove, mute their phone when you're not speaking, and speak clearly as much as you can in a manner that will help us generate any good minutes. Are there any questions? All right, Madam Chair, I turn the floor back over to you.
Before we begin, I understand that Mr. Reed wishes to make a motion regarding suspension of the rules of procedure. Mr. Reed?
Yes, I do, and Madam Chair, I actually don't have the script for that. Is there a way that maybe Mr. O'Rourke could read it? I'm fine with it, I, it does pass muster on the lack of L and A.
It's right in front of me, I'll read it. I move that pursuant to Article 7 of our Rules of Procedure, the Town Council suspend Rule 13, which requires all matters relating to the general government of the town and all agreements to which a town is a party be preferred, refer to L and A. The reason for this motion is that due to the coronavirus, our subcommittees, including L and A, have not met to consider the matters which appear on this evening's agenda, which otherwise would have been referred to and voted on by L and A as a condition precedent to appearing before the full body. Is there a second?
I second that, it's Kevin Reed.
Yep, okay, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to be, Jason Mauer, I just wanted to be sure that this is with regards to the items for tonight's meeting only, that we are voting on this suspension of procedure.
Yes, I believe it's, fine, we said that, I believe, you can ask Mr. Reed. Anything else, Mr. Reed?
No, I mean, I think Mr. Mauer would, I mean, de facto would cover that, right? There's nothing, there's nothing else that could cover implicitly, right? So I just want to make sure I understand the question.
I believe last time we, in the motion specifically stated for it to, that we were suspending it for the purposes of this meeting, rather than just in general. I don't necessarily think that it needs to be in there, I just wanted to make sure that that was the intent of the motion, which it sounds like it is.
Yeah, that's the, that is definitely the intent of the motion, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mauer?
No further comment.
Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules. DeeDee Martin?
Yes.
Jen Aguilar?
Aye, vote yes.
Jason Mauer?
Aye.
Terry Rooney?
Aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
John O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapelis, aye. The motion passes 9 to 0. Communications, I hereby ask that Communications Items A and B be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Public participation, at this time, I will ask the moderator and Town Attorney Frank Lieto to identify if there are any individuals who wish to participate in public participation.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any members of the public who wish to participate in this meeting at this time? And before you respond, I'm just going to ask that each of you slowly, clear and clearly state your name, so I can make a list. And I'd also remind everybody to please adhere to the guidelines of public participation with our set, which are set forth on our agenda. So at this time, if you could, one at a time, identify yourself, and I will make a list for Madam Chairman of those that wish to participate in this meeting. I'll ask again, anybody wish to participate publicly at this time? Okay, Madam Chair, hearing none, I would say there are no individuals who wish to participate at this time.
Okay. Let's see, after any other individuals, but you've done that, Mr. Moderator. Okay, going on to new business. We have one item under new business. Item A, participation in the tax collection modification program pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order 7S. I will now turn the floor over to our First Electman Ken Kellogg for introduction of this matter and for an initial discussion. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, First Electman Kellogg, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, everyone, thank you. I think you're all familiar with the topic on the agenda tonight. This was a matter that I had previously emailed this council on April 9th to give you some preliminary warning that it was going to be coming before you. So, that, that as well as my cover letter, that email is in your packet this evening. As you all are aware, the Governors, one of the Governors' executive order, specifically Item 7 Sierra, Section 6, requires that every municipality through the legislative body elect to participate in either one or both of two optional programs. The town is compelled to select at least one or both, and it must be done by April 25th. Again, it is a town council decision, but as I'll, as I referenced earlier, I also did ask the Board of Finance to provide its input and recommendations as well. I'll just give you a brief overview of the options that were provided based upon not just the executive orders, but also guidance from the State Office of Policy and Management. You have the full order, the full guidance from OPM in your packets, but essentially, option number one is a deferment program. It would extend the deadline and the normal grace period to pay taxes that are due on July 1st. The normal grace period would be August 1st. This would delay that grace period until October 1st without any interest. It may require attestation of a significant economic impact and a filing and processing of applications with the tax collector, or it can be simply opened up to all taxpayers without distinction. The second option is a low-interest rate program. It provides a significant reduction of the statutory interest for delinquent taxes. It goes from 18% per year to 3% per year, which equates to 1.5% per month versus the option which would provide 1/4 of 1% per month. On that option, in that option, the taxes due July 1st would still have a grace period until August 3rd without any interest, but then taxes, if unpaid, from August 1st, I'm sorry, August 4th through October 2nd would be subject to the lower 0.25% per month rate. There is no eligibility criteria in that option, with the exception of landlords, which is further described in the executive order. It requires some attestation of a benefit provided to the tenant. Also in that option, any taxes that are delinquent as of March 10th would also be subject to the lower rate from a period of April 1st through July 1st. Both programs apply to all Monroe taxes, that would be real estate, motor vehicle, and personal property. And on the subject of escrow payments, the order requires that the, if, if payments have been escrowed, that the escrow agent must remit the payments on a normal timetable. However, there is a carve-out, which states so long as the borrower remains current on their mortgage or is in a forbearance or deferment program. You'll find that that language has left some open interpretation and concern on risk, which will be discussed, I think, later on in our meeting. I have asked our Finance Department, as well as the Board of Finance, with input from the tax collector to work on some financial models, which they did and provided to the Board of Finance, basically looking at best case, worst case models, etc. And Mr. Bonowski is on this call, as you're aware, if you have any questions for him in that regard. Additionally, our tax collector Deb Heim is also on the call, if you have any questions for her. Prior to turning this back over to the chair with her permission, I will ask that the Town Attorney give his legal report regarding this matter, and after that, he turn it over to the Chairman of the Board of Finance, Mike Mandros, to further discuss the Board of Finance's recommendation, which I referenced in my, in my cover memo, to be the low-interest rate program, but I would like him to discuss that recommendation and the meeting he conducted further. And with that, I'll turn, refers to Attorney Lieto, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. So, I won't belabor the points that I think were very well made by, by Mr. Kellogg in his memo that I've pulled up on the screen. Essentially, what we're faced with is another, a mandate from Governor Lamont pursuant to Executive Order 7S, which was subsequently amended by Executive Order 7W. The amendment essentially provided two things. Rather than the term 90 days, it was, the term 90 day was amended to mean three months, and the start date of March 10th was amended to mean April 1st. So, the 7W just clarified the start dates of the application of the order, and the 90-day period was clarified to a monthly period as opposed to a daily period. So, what 7S does is it mandates the town to select one of two tax relief, COVID-related tax relief options, as were pointed out by Mr. Kellogg. Option 1, a deferment program. Option 2, a low-interest rate program. Or both of the programs can be adopted. My, and what I, what I plan on doing this evening, I've drafted the skeleton of a resolution, and based upon the discussion that we'll have later, I will draft the resolution that's more appropriate. There are many options that this council has to consider, of course, within the selection of each of the options. Number one, what are the risks? What are the legal risks? And for that matter, financial risks, which I'll let Mr. Mandros and Mr. Bonowski weigh in on the latter. But the legal risks, and again, keep in mind that, thanks to Mr. Kellogg, I've, I've been given the opportunity to discuss this with other municipalities, other town attorneys. We've had guidance from the attorneys drafting the executive orders. CCM has been helpful, cost has been helpful in kind of interpreting these things, and, you know, this is a matter of first impression, so we're just trying to gauge the risk. But with respect to the deferment program, there's a number of issues that are presented. One is, the Town Council has to decide who is eligible for the deferment program if they should choose the deferment program. Eligibility can be all taxpayers, or eligibility can be taxpayers who qualify, and the Town Council would have to determine what is the eligibility requirements. There are some suggestions. I think we will see a form that OPM has, an eligibility criteria form that OPM has suggested the towns use, which is basically an application for taxpayers to use to fill out, to determine if they qualify or not. Again, with, with the creation of eligibility comes legal risk or discrimination for selectiveness. It puts a burden, I'm not going to put words in Ms. Heim's mouth, but it certainly puts a burden on the town to have to not only determine the eligibility, but to measure the criteria. And then the ultimate question from a legal perspective is, how do we enforce fraud? What if someone makes a misrepresentation? How do we know, who's going to police this? And is it going to happen? Do we have the resources to do it? And what are our rights and remedies? So, that's something from a legal perspective that I can't answer. I don't, I don't know that the town wants to put themselves in a position of risk on the front end of denying someone the right to a certain program, and then on the back end, you know, neighbor A says, why does neighbor B have it? Neighbor B's been working every single day, so has, so has his wife and his kids, for that matter, and I don't, I don't know of any COVID-related, you know, economic impact that they've suffered, so, you know, Mr. First Electman, you know, what are we doing about that? So, those are some of the concerns that I think are out there. I'm not advocating for one or the other at this time. If you want to ask me my opinion as a citizen, I'm certainly willing to give that to you. But as the Town Attorney, I think my job for you is to identify the risks with respect to the deferment. With respect to the low-interest rate program, there is no such eligibility necessity. So it removes the eligibility requirements, that threshold, the risk. It applies to everybody but landlords, and it would provide that low-interest relief during that 90-day, that three-month period. You know, keep in mind that the relief is only granted if full payment is made during the forbearance period, if one is to take advantage of the If one is to take advantage of the period and then at the termination of the period, they still have delinquent taxes, retroactively, the higher interest rate would apply. There is a few, there are a few gray areas in the executive order that I think are open to interpretation. Even there's a white paper that OPM released that certainly finance, Mr. Kellogg, Ms. Heim and I are aware of, that, that frankly speaking, has some open-ended questions there on. So, which is interesting. But, so the low interest rate program has certainly less risks. There's two other analyses that I think are important. One is the landlord requirements. We, to, to partake in either program, there has to be an application process for landlords. And they have to offer, essentially, they have to have a COVID impact and have offered amensory relief to their tenants. And it's something that we can discuss in more detail later on during your discussion. But there will be a necessity for eligibility thresholds for them. Again, there is a recommendation from OPM on their application form for a formula that we can adopt, but I don't necessarily think that we're required to adopt that formula. I think that application is just for our, for our guidance alone. I do know most towns are just adopting the form for that reason. And then with respect to, my biggest concern is with respect to the banks. And I do think that there's a general misconception out there, and it's, it's being presented to the towns as an absolute, and I don't think it is by any stretch of the imagination. And it's quite concerning to me, and this is across the whole state. Essentially, what it states in the executive order is, if I can pull it up for you, can follow along. If you look at section D, escrow payments, sorry, that's probably four font on your screen. I did learn that you can make it bigger recently, so when you're viewing it, which is interesting. It says, "Financial institutions and mortgage servicers that hold property tax payments in escrow, on behalf of a borrower, shall continue to remit property taxes to the municipality." So if you have an escrow account with a bank, which the majority, my understanding is 85% or above in the town do, then the banks must pay the taxes on time, and they are not essentially eligible for either of the programs that we discussed. However, there's a caveat, and it says, "So long as the borrower remains current on their mortgage or is in a forbearance or deferment program." Let's stop there. What, to me, the plain letter of that reading is if a borrower has not made a payment or they're late on their mortgage, I'm sorry, if they're, you know, if they're not current, so I don't, we have to define current, so let's, let's, let's assume current is more than 30 days late, which is going to be the majority of the population in the United States of America, then the financial institution does not have to comply with this carve out. And to me, that's as clear as day. I can tell you right now what's going on with banks is they're inundated with calls and not everybody has, almost, I would say the vast majority of people are not paying their mortgage right now in an abundance of caution. I would also say that the vast majority of those people have not been offered a forbearance or deferment program. And so I, I would, I'm concerned about the risk financially to the town with this particular exclusion, if we, if we decide to partake in some of these programs. So, you know, the, the deferment program, I think, presents much more risk than a low interest program in this regard. Because at the very least, while the banks could say, well, we don't have to make the payments because this borrower or these borrowers or all of these borrowers are not current on their mortgage, and by the way, we haven't offered them a forbearance program. We haven't offered them a deferment program. And there's a misconception out there that every single person in the United States has a Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac mortgage, which is not true. So if you don't have a Fannie or Freddie mortgage, or you're not participating, a bank participating in one of these Governor Lamont voluntary programs where they say, we're going to offer these programs to the consumers, then you may not be eligible for, and there's no obligation to provide you if they deferment or forbearance program at this time. And it also doesn't mean even if you are eligible that you are effectively in one of those programs, because maybe there's an application or something that you have to do, reach out to the bank, do something, and they haven't done so. So that's a, that's a real concern that I have. I think what you're going to hear, what you're certainly reading out there, and what a lot of people are indicating is that this is a mandate, that if you have an escrow account, you have to, the banks have to make the payments. It doesn't say that. And I don't know why that's being spread around throughout the state of Connecticut. It just doesn't, simply doesn't say that. I think, I, I will be honest, I mean, the way I understand, and, and Ms. Heim would know better, almost all banks use First American Tax Services and the checks that come in on these escrow accounts, I believe it's one large check, and there's one very big holding company where all the escrow payments are funneled through and paid to the municipality. So I would, I would venture to say the expectation is that the banks will continue in due course to make their payments timely. But my concern as a lawyer is if someone wakes up and gives them advice, that person may be climbing the corporate ladder pretty quickly. So with that, with that type of advice. So that concerns me a little bit. And I would be, you know, I'd be, I would be very weary of the financial discussions that are, that are happening with an absolute 100% expectation that, you know, the 85% of our, of our borrowers in town or property owners that have escrow accounts, that, you know, we're guaranteed that mortgage is going to come, that, that those tax payments are going to come in. So that's, that's really the, the sum and substance of, of the concerns that I have legally is, is the, just to summarize, is the eligibility, the liability on the municipality, both on the front end and the back end for the deferment, which doesn't exist on the low interest. And notwithstanding all of that, we do have to come up with some kind of formula that's acceptable for, for the landlord aspect of it. With that, you know, I'll wait for discussion for any questions unless anybody has one now. And I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Manjos.
Before we move on, could I ask you one question, Frank? Jason Mauer, you've been talking about the escrow payments. There's no reason to believe that if a bank is, does decide, well, they're not paying, we're not going to pay the taxes on time, that let's say we were doing the low interest program, that that low interest still wouldn't apply, and it would still, the late tax would still collect interest, correct?
Well, the, the carve out, the answer is yes, but it would, it would, it would entitle them to the low interest for late payment. And so we would be guarantee, you know, they would be late, their taxes would be late, and they would be subject to the low interest. Whereas in the deferment, they would not have to pay, and they could withhold that very large check.
All the way through October.
For the three months, exactly, which would put us in a bad financial position.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Manjos.
Thank you, Mr. Lito. I think you did a great job explaining that. We did have a meeting at Finance last week where we did take this up at fairly great length. And basically, I think Frank explained very well, there's a couple of wide open risks on the deferment option. So we did do cash flow analysis. Obviously, I think everybody knows, we do our ma- majority of our collecting twice a year, June and in January. It is a substantial financial influx that we get. We do expect it to come from the banks. There is a wide open area, and that was one of the biggest concerns we had on Finance, was that I spoke to a couple of the large banks. I have a good friend at BOA, and he was expressing that there is a substantial portion of their mortgage that are not being paid. I think the financial ramifications that we're in right now are not completely understood yet. I think we're going to see for quite a while, fairly dramatic suffering from the taxpayers, from employment. I mean, we've, we've, these are uncharted times. We've never been in a situation where we've gone from, you know, five to potentially 20% unemployment in a month. We're of a lot of people who are going to be suffering, and this mortgage situation will get worse. If we were to defer and we had a substantial amount of people participating in the town, fundamentally could, in our worst case scenario, we ran out of money in about eight weeks. We just don't have the capital to run the town without influx at all. I think what we've learned from government programs is that as soon as you open a program, participation is very likely. So I think it would be very easy for people to justify and express that they've had some impact from COVID. I don't know too many people who could say they haven't been impacted at all. The second part that we discussed that concerned us quite a bit was who makes that decision and how do you enforce it? If you expect just the tax office to make rulings and decisions, you're exposing yourself, as Mr. Lito expressed, to a lot of legal challenges. I mean, we already get a lot of legal challenges just on taxes, and I think you go up to a very difficult situation that we don't have the manpower right now to handle. From a finance standpoint, we feel like if we did do the deferment, we would have to be considerably more conservative on our budgeting and maybe want to take some moves that we really don't want to take at this point. I don't know if everybody, but, you know, obviously, we're coming up with plans to change the way we approach the budget. I think certainly on tested waters, and we're going to be exceptionally conservative. We're not comfortable raising taxes at all, so we're going to keep that flat. How we get there, we'll be working on starting tomorrow. But we will be making a lot of changes going forward, and the biggest concern we have is the unknown, and that unknown is the collection rate. Our typical collection rate, we budget at 98.7%, especially in residential, it's very predictable. But we believe between motor vehicle and personal property, we've going to have a lot of risk exposure with businesses. A lot of your businesses are shut down right now, and I think we're going to lose a fairly significant amount of businesses in this country and the state and this town. There's going to be places that just don't make it through. So I think with all the risks and the unknown, we were very in agreement unanimously not to do the deferment program and to do the low interest program just for most of those reasons that Frank explained, and the financial risk that would be associated with a full deferment. So I'm happy to take questions. I'm happy to, you know, go through numbers, whatever anybody's comfortable with, but that's pretty straightforward of where we came down on it.
Mr. Manjos?
Go ahead, go ahead, Jason.
Jason Mauer, I just wanted to ask the, how are you doing? I just wanted to ask, in my review of these two options, it seems the only real increase in revenue that you could see from doing the deferment versus doing the low interest is the interest for loans that are already delinquent, for, for, sorry, for taxes that are already delinquent, because there would be no decrease in that interest. Is, am I incorrect in that there is no other way that that brings more revenue to the town?
Yeah, no, the defer, exactly. I mean, exactly, the things that are already delinquent prior to those dates would not get included in that.
So basically, that would be the only way, those small number, considering the high percentage of collection that we tend to be at, would no, in no way outweigh the amount that we build up even on the low interest for late payments with the low interest program. Thank you very much.
No problem. Anybody else with questions?
I have a question, DeeDee Martin.
Yes.
Do we have any idea, and this is due in on the 26th, today is the 22nd. Do we have any information on what other towns are doing?
Only anecdotally, I've heard from different towns. I know I followed, I read on Shelton, Shelton is just doing a low interest program. I think I heard Trumbull was doing a deferment. Ken might know better.
Yes, I, I believe they have. I'm almost certain they have. One of the, one of the, I'm sorry, this is Ken Kellogg for Selectmen speaking. You know, one of the challenges in comparing the different towns is that many of these other towns are on a quarterly tax payment process, so their risk is spread out a little bit broader. So one that is quarterly may, may have a greater ability to manage the cash flow as relates to that. That said, I do know that Shelton adopted the low interest recently, Trumbull did do the deferment. I know that the tax collector Deb Heim did get some update from her group recently, and I believe it showed about, Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it showed about two thirds selecting a deferment and one third selecting a low interest, and that was certainly not the entire state having reported in, maybe, I don't know what percent of the state, a half or so maybe reporting in. But Deb, do you have that?
I think also it's interesting to note, while we wait for Deb, is that I think you'll see a lot of towns approaching this whole situation, the financial response to COVID differently. I know Trumbull, I'm sure everybody's read, furloded quite a bit of employees, Fairfield has furloughed employees. We're trying to take the approach that we're not going to, didn't want to go that route, and I didn't want to slash the budget and slash different places. So I think a lot of towns are taking very different approaches on how they go forward. I don't agree with a lot of them. I mean, I was reading Shelton, and they decided to do a zero tax and assuming a 98% collection rate. I think that's just super high risk. We go into this very conservatively. We're going to budget very conservatively. We're going to, I'm proposing that we're using our fund balance to mitigate our taxes and mitigate some risk and to go forward, but we're going to take a very conservative approach. And I really, I don't want to go down the route of slashing services and slashing staff, but I think a lot of towns are doing that and deferring and slashing budgets. So, I mean, that is another approach towns are taking. I don't recommend it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that opinion.
Any other questions for Mr. Manjos?
Madam Chair, if I could just add one more comment that I don't think I was clear on when I went off on my tangent. The other thing that we have to consider about the deferment is the class of individuals that qualify. I think I touched on it, but it can be everybody in the town, but it also can be residential taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits, you know, the, the, it's, it's a carte blanche approach as well. So I just want to be clear that those are some other considerations that would have to be made in the, in the deferral plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lito. Anything else for Mr. Manjos? Thank you all. As the council has options available, I will now ask each council member for his or her input, opinion, and or questions they have regarding our options. So DeeDee, you're first.
Wonderful. Well, it, this is obviously extremely difficult, and there's, there, it's like pick the best of the worst here. As it's explained to us by Mr. Lito and Mr. Manjos, it appears to me that the low interest way is what we need to be considering. So at this point, that's probably where I would be leading.
Thank you. Jennifer Aguilar?
So I came into this actually thinking that option one was better, but thank you, Mr. Manjos and Mr. Lito for your, and Mr. Kellogg for your explanations, because I also because I also um concur with Ms. Martin that um option two would be the way to go.
Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in listening to uh what we've been presented with today as well as research into uh what these options provide for the town, it does seem that both for revenue into the town as well as mitigating risk to the town, the low interest program is the best way to go. Um, with the deferment program, even if we have one case of somebody saying that we denied them when we should have uh allowed them into it, the legal fees on that alone will completely wipe out any savings that we might have had by doing the deferment. Uh, the low interest seems to be the only option, especially considering the uh how spread thin our administrative staff is right now in these times. Adding any additional administrative uh burdens on them would be uh not the right decision. As for the one item that we do need to discuss within the low interest program as to landlords um, and what their criteria would be, in my opinion, the criteria that should be uh required of landlords is show, is showing that they are not charging any late fees for late rent through the, at least through the time of the tax, uh, the, the low interest collection. That would be my opinion as to what the uh, I don't, what the uh conditions on the landlord should be in the low interest program.
Mr. Rooney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I think we look at the town, the town is a business, it's incorporated, needs money to run. I think deferment would be a spiral um into a bad position. I think uh the, the low interest is an initiative to help people. And I think that's our job is to help people, but at the end of the day, uh, to say to people, you don't have to pay your mortgage, you don't have to pay your taxes. It's just an invitation to not do so. So I think the um, the low interest is better and that's the direction. I am one hundred percent completely putting my vote on.
Jonathan Formicella.
Uh, this is Jonathan Formicella. Um, after reviewing the Board of Finance, previous Board of Finance meeting and uh listening to Chairman Manjos and Attorney Lido tonight, um, the only fiscally responsible option is low interest rate program for the town. We need to be able to pay our bills and be able to keep staffing in place so that our town, our town citizens receive those essential services that we provide. So I am um in favor of the low interest rate program option.
Tony Scott.
Tony Scott here. Uh, firstly, let me thank uh Chairman Manjos and Town Attorney Frank Lido for the explanations. This is great. Um, you know, reading it on a piece of paper is one thing, but having your guys uh ability to explain it uh more layman's term for, for someone like myself, I'll speak for myself to understand it better. I really appreciate that. It really helps make a clear of where we should go and I do agree that option two is probably the way to go. I don't think though, this is, this is just my opinion, I don't think there's going to be much difference in terms of somebody who's having a hard time paying their taxes. Um, either one will stop them. I don't think the low, if they can't take it, make it, they don't have the money to pay it. I don't think option two is also going to let them somehow come up with money to pay it, but I understand the risk and the risks that we need to protect ourselves on. Um, those were explained very well to me today and I really appreciate that and that's why I would definitely be supporting option two.
Sean O'Rourke.
Sean O'Rourke, um, I support option two, the uh low interest program for uh, for the tax collection.
Uh, Kevin Reed.
Yeah, Kevin Reed, I'm, I'm going to echo Sean O'Rourke's uh brief. Uh, I, I support option two, low interest. Uh, I would just be echoing and repeating everything that everybody said before me. So I think everybody summed it up quite well and accurately. Option two.
And uh for myself, I listened to the Board of Finance and I thought, wow, gee, number one, you know, let them have three months off. But then when I listen to the experts here, we really have to go with option two, low interest. So actually it's a nine to zero vote, not, you know, you'll be asking, you can always discuss this again, but I'm saying certainly right this minute we have a a huge consensus. Uh, let's see. I'll now ask each council member to indicate if they have any further discussion and the directions they wish to see the resolution drafted. That is deferred program, low interest program, or both programs. So uh let's start again with Dee Dee Martin.
Uh, no, no further comment. Um, and just, uh, the uh low interest.
Okay, uh, Jen Aguilar.
No further discussion in low interest.
Jason Mauer.
Uh, I'd go for the low interest. I do want to ask our town attorney Frank Lido, am I correct that we have to to, in drafting this resolution now, decide on what the criteria would be for the landlords?
Uh, I was going to interrupt and, and try to address that in this round of uh comments. Uh, so thank you for um prodding me, uh, Mr. Mauer, this is Frank Lido, Town Attorney, uh, speaking. Uh, I, you know, I, I did spend some time drafting a uh resolution. I, I I think it would be prudent to um have council consider that. However, um, I was pulling up the OPM application for deferment. Uh, hopefully you can see that on the screen for those of you that can uh essentially, um, let's go back to the uh executive order. So if we're considering a low interest, where it sounds like we are uh, yeah, have a full consensus, uh, the second half of C would apply. So it's, it's only eligible to landlords for uh, any taxpayer that rents or leases, blah, 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 blah. If said landlord offers commensurate forbearance to tenants or lessees upon their request. So what, what that uh was explained to mean uh is, and if you look at this form, where it says landlords here, maybe I can use my fancy tools here. Uh, this, all right, here, look at that. All right. Um, if you look at the form, what they're doing and I'll, I'll, for deferral purposes, again, this is for deferral purposes, but we can mimic something like this where there is a presumption that twenty-five percent uh forbearance would equate to the average um um, ta- uh, tax versus rent equation. Uh, I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician, so I'm probably saying it horribly for you guys to understand, but basically what, what you're saying is if the taxes represent twenty-five percent of the uh rent, of the periodic rent, then a reduction uh that equals that would be an appropriate uh offer of relief. That'd be commensurate with a tax break. The, the issue that I'm um how do I get off of this now? There we go. Okay. If you go back to, uh, well, it's, it's still there, perfect, but if you go back to um the last sentence, this is what's interesting to me. If said landlord offers commensurate forbearance to tenants or lessees upon their request. So to me, that means that the tenant, the tenant has to ask for the relief and then the landlord has to give it to them. My personal opinion is I don't think that we have to comply with uh the last, upon their request. I, I don't know why we need another layer of having anybody have to go into the tax collector's office to prove that here's a letter from the tenant where the tenant requested it and then here's my offer back to the tenant. I think the standard should just be, the landlords should be educated by this and they should have to prove they've offered it. Whether or not the tenants requested it or not. How does it, does the tenant have notice? Does the tenant, you know, I mean, do we really want to get into all that? If we want to be fair across the board, my personal opinion would be the landlord has to show us they offered it and they're eligible. That's it. I don't, we don't, no request. That's my personal opinion.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree. I agree.
And, and to answer the question, well, back to the deferral, you know, we could adopt this pers, I'll, I would defer to uh, uh, Ms. Heim on this. Um, but I don't know that we should, you know, essentially, if we have to in the resolution state what the threshold is, I'm comfortable saying that on a form, uh, you know, based upon the opinion of the tax collector with guidance from OPM, because there is a, a white paper and this, this form from OPM. So on forms, I, I can just read you the language that I'm considering. I might as well just do it now. Um, uh, no landlord or taxpayer that rents or leases to any commercial, residential, or institutional tenant or lessie shall be eligible for the low interest rate program without first demonstrating via submission of documentation in a form and substance satisfactory to the tax collector that an offer of commensurate rent forbearance was made to the tenants or lessees. And I was going to add to that language upon uh guidance from OPM, because that's, that's and, and that's what a lot of other municipalities have done.
The, the one thing that I would recommend, Jason Mauer, the one thing that I would recommend adding just to that portion would be upon demonstration, the same language you have, uh, that one, the property hazard will suffer a significant revenue decline and two, then the rest of the language that you had. Just showing that basically they're not already being paid rent, that they have to show not just that they made an offer, but also that they're not being paid rent. Or, or not being paid full rent.
Um, again, just the response to that following, that, that, that type of analysis was included in the deferment program. Eligibility above, but not in the low interest rate program pursuant to the executive order. So I don't know if I want to overstep, if I would recommend overstepping the bounds to make it further restrictive. Um, again, just trying to conform as much to this executive order as possible. That would be my recommendation. I, I don't disagree with you. I think your analysis is correct, but that's not what it says and I, I don't know if we want to stray too far from it.
That makes sense.
I, I agree that, Jason, your suggestion is logical, but it's not what the executive order offers.
Yep.
Sometimes logic doesn't follow uh, uh, according to the order, so uh, I, I will go along with opinion of council here and go in accordance to the order.
All right, so let me get the, the rest of us, our opinion and then anyone else has a discussion, we can look at it again. So I'm up to Terry Rooney.
Okay. Any comments, Terry?
Uh, you know, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to uh refer back to Tony's point of you know, people, some people are just not going to be able to, to do this. You know, some people are just not going to be able to afford. Some people are going to be so affected by this situation, but they're not going to be able to pay their mortgages and their taxes and I, and I do have understanding for that. I just, I feel that if we focus just on a deferral program, it keeps people unmotivated, you know, I just, I hate to see people fall back and just become reliant. I want people in the town to work hard and fight and try to find ways to stay motivated, you know? It's easy to fall back into a lazy pattern if we say, hey, you don't have I mean, I think that the deferment program helps people that are struggling and it also keeps them motivated so that I just wanted to clarify some of the things I think maybe I didn't touch on, but I am completely in favor of the deferment program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Jonathan Formicella.
Um, I, I'm in favor of the uh low interest program. Uh, just for clarification, um, in picking the low interest program, I'm reading the OPM guidance. It says there's no documentation requirement for ease of administration. Uh, will the language of the resolution we adopt, uh, again, sometimes it's hard to hear on these things, will that require some type of proof or documentation uh for use of this low interest program?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Just to, Tony Kellogg, just to clarify, not for residents, but it will for landlords.
Oh, correct. But the, the OPM guidance says that there's no documentation requirement for landlords. Under OPM guidance, page seven, section four, what are the requirements for landlords? Paragraph four.
Jonathan, it wouldn't shock me that the OPM guidance has something contradictory to the executive order. In fact, it has been uh, the, a commonality amongst some of the white papers that have come out interpreting these executive orders. And in fact, if you read some more of that guidance, you'll find more inconsistencies with the order. The order clearly requires a demonstration of an offer of commensurate relief to the tenants.
Okay, um, all right. So in the draft that we're going to have, it's, it will require landlords to provide um some type of documentation, then?
That will be my recommendation. It will be in my draft. It's obviously your resolution, but that will be my recommendation.
Okay. All right, Tony Scott.
Yeah, I have nothing further and I'm good to be forward with um, with option two.
Sean O'Rourke.
Sean O'Rourke, no further comment and still support option two, uh, low interest deferment.
Kevin Reed.
Kevin Reed, still in support of number two.
And myself, I'm still in support of number two. I'll now ask each council member to indicate if they have any further discussion and the directions that they wish to see the resolution drafted. That is the furrow program, low interest program, or both programs. Uh, I, I think we've done this. So I think really I'm just going to call.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Jen Aguilar. Can I, can I ask a, a follow-up question?
Sure.
Um, in, in response to uh Mr. Formicella's question, Mr. Lido, would the fact that this is contradictory to, now I forgot the acronym, would that put us in any legal jeopardy that it could be contradictory, asking the landlord for legal document?
I don't, uh, my opinion is no, the executive order speaks for itself and OPM's guidance isn't just, isn't dispositive on what the town uh can or cannot do. I can tell you right now that I've reviewed at least ten uh approved uh town council or legislative body um, resolutions. All of them include some type of requirement for landlords to submit documentation.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Again, I don't know, I don't, I don't know how you could, how do you demonstrate that you've done something without submitting documentation?
Right, yeah.
Uh, Ken Kellogg, first selectman, I just jumping real quick. Uh, Jonathan, to your point, I, I know that you're referring to one section on the guidance. Um, there's another section on page four referring to eligibility of landlords and there is a, a statement there that says uh, that to be eligible for either the, the lower reduced interest rate program a landlord must offer commensurate forbearance and it says the application forums have more detail about this section and contain specific sections to be completed by landlords. So as Atria Lido said, um, the OPM guidance does tend to uh be a little bit inconsistent in areas, but there is clearly a section that does speak to landlords providing documentation.
Okay, uh, this is Jonathan Formicella. That's, that's fine. I, I think that would be fine to require documentation um, and tying to the um, the language of the executive order. Um, that's going to be the more authoritative um document than the OPM guidance. So that's, that's fine with me.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
I, I
Can I just?
Yes, that's, I was just going to say, I, I cut you off before until I got all the uh council members' opinion. So please, Deborah Heim, if you have anything to say, please say it now.
Yeah, I was on the phone with uh, uh, OPM today and they uh said that for the landlords, you definitely need some kind of uh you know, application or whatever from the landlords. The one thing I have to stress is they said you can't, you can't make it any stricter than what their application is. You can make it less strict, but you can't, you know, put um more uh, inform, ask them for more documentation or whatever that, 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 what, what is on the application that they already wrote.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Heim? So I'll now call for recess while the town attorney completes the drafting of resolution twenty dash forty-five. While we are in recess and to comply with FOI, all lines will now be placed on you. So Attorney Lido has indicated he's completed the drafting of the resolution.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to present it. Just give me thirty seconds and I'll have it ready to go. You don't even have to go into recess.
Okay. Okay, sure.
Madam Chair, it's Mike Manjos, Finance. Um, I need to jump to grab on another call, so if there was anything else you needed from me, otherwise I'm going to. there was anything else you needed from me, otherwise I'm gonna leave you guys to finish up the paperwork.
I don't think you both, you know, we appreciate your efforts, um, no way.
Thank you so much for the support, and, uh, we'll all, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mike.
I hope the town appreciates them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, I'm gonna move this over to the screen. It's only a rough draft, so...
Okay, so the time is now eight twelve, and the special meeting of town council is back in session. Attorney Lito has indicated that he has finalized a draft of Resolution twenty dash forty-five, which he will share on his screen, which I will also ask him to read for the benefit of all those who are calling in and cannot view the document.
Okay, give me one moment. This is always scary doing this, you know, a lawyer presenting live, uh, live information at the same time. All right, let's see what we got here. Hold on.
I have faith in you. I said it first. I said I had faith in you.
Okay, so here we go. Um, I'll read the resolution. It's Resolution twenty dash forty-five. Whereas on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty, Alex Azar, Secretary of the United States Department of Public Health and Human Services, declared a public health emergency in response to the global pandemic known as the novel coronavirus disease or COVID-19, otherwise known as pandemic. And whereas on March tenth, two thousand twenty, Ned Lamont, Governor of the State of Connecticut, declared a public health and civil preparedness emergency in response to the pandemic, defined as a state declaration. And whereas on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty, retroactive to March first, two thousand twenty, Donald Trump, Donald J. Trump, President of the United States, declared a national emergency to combat the pandemic. And whereas the pandemic has resulted in the spread of disease throughout Connecticut and throughout the country, as well as resulting in shortage of essential supplies that could jeopardize public safety and civil preparedness. And whereas the governor has issued a series of executive orders which collectively govern the conduct of municipal government during the state declaration, including the town of Monroe, here and after the town. And whereas on April first, two thousand twenty, the governor issued Executive Order Number Seven S, Section Six, of which suspended modified tax deadlines and collection efforts by establishing two programs to offer support to eligible taxpayers, businesses, nonprofits, and residents who have been economically affected by COVID-19, the COVID-19 pandemic, known as the deferment program and the low interest rate program, collectively the programs. And further mandated that each municipality, by determination of its local legislative body, shall participate in one or both programs, and shall notify the Secretary of Office and Policy Management, OPM, of said participation no later than April twenty-fifth. I'm gonna add, I'm gonna make that April twenty-five, two thousand twenty, so no later than April twenty-five, two thousand twenty. What the, hold on. All right. And whereas on April ninth, two thousand twenty, the governor issued Executive Order Number Seven W, Section One, subsection B, of which amended Executive Order Seven S Six as follows. One, reference to ninety-day periods are amended to three months, and two, references to March tenth are amended to April first. Whereas Executive Order Seven S Six, subsection B, as amended by Executive Order Seven W one B, defines the low interest rate program and states in pertinent part, notwithstanding Section twelve dash one forty-six of the general statutes, one, the delinquent portion of the principal of any taxes on real property, personal property, or motor vehicles, or municipal water, sewer, and electric charges or assessments, or part thereof shall be subject to interest at the rate of three percent per annum for ninety days. I'm, I'm editing myself as we go. Ninety days was amended to three months, so we're gonna make that change. For three months from the time when it became due and payable until the same is paid for any such tax rate, charge, or assessment due and payable from April first through and including July first, two thousand twenty, unless such delinquent portion is subject to interest and penalties at less than three percent per annum. Following the three months, that por, the portion that remains delinquent shall be subject to interest and penalties as previously established. And three, and two, any portion of the principal of any taxes on real property, personal property or motor vehicles, or municipal water, sewer, and electric rates, charges, or assessments or part thereof that have been delinquent on or prior to April first, shall be subject to interest at the rate of three percent per annum for ninety days from this order. Again, I'm gonna change ninety days to three months. So we'll read, uh, at the rate of three percent per annum for three months from this order, unless such delinquent portion is subject to interest and penalties at less than three percent per annum. Following the three months, the portion that remains deli, delinquent shall be subject to interest and penalties as previously established. Whereas any taxpayer that rents or leases to any commercial, residential, or institutional tenant or lessie shall only be eligible for the low interest rate program if said landlord offers commensurate forbearance to tenants or lessies upon their request. So that is missing a section. Let's see. There with me. So that section we'll read, whereas Executive Order Seven S Six, subsection C, of which provides any taxpayer that rents or leases to any commercial, residential, or institutional tenant or lessie shall only be eligible for low interest rate program if said landlord offers commensurate forbearance to tenants or lessies upon their request. Uh, whereas Executive Order Seven S Six, subsection D, of which mandates that financial institutions and mortgage servicers that hold property tax payments in escrow on behalf of a borrower shall continue to remit property taxes to the municipality so long as the borrower remains current on their mortgage or is in forbearance or deferment program irrespective of the borrower's eligibility for or participation in the deferment program or the low interest rate program. Now therefore pursuant to Executive Order Seven S Six, subsections B, C, and D, as amended by Executive Order Seven W one B, be it resolved that the town council hereby adopts the low interest rate program for all taxpayers of the town, except as set forth in a contrary here and below, relative to all taxes due to the town from April first, two thousand twenty, through and including July first, two thousand twenty. Be it further resolved that no landlord or taxpayer that rents or leases to any commercial, residential, or institutional tenant or lessie shall be eligible for the low interest rate program without first demonstrating via submission of documentation in form and substance satisfactory to the tax collector based upon guidance from OPM that an offer of commensurate rent forbearance was made to tenants or lessies. Be it further resolved, nothing herein shall grant any tax relief set forth in this resolution to any financial institutions and mortgage servicers that hold property tax payments in escrow on behalf of a borrower so long as the borrower remains current on their mortgage or is in forbearance or defer, or deferment program irrespective of the borrower's eligibility for or participation in deferment program or the low interest rate program. Uh, and that would be approved by the town council, Enid Lapelis, Chair. The only change I'm gonna make to that last sentence I read is eligibility for participation in... I guess we don't, I, I would recommend we don't even need that last sentence because we're not participating in the deferment program, and there's no eligibility for the low interest rate program. So I'll take your comments on that, but, uh, we can leave for just some eligibility for participation.
The eligibility for the low interest rate program, Jason Mauer, would still exist for landlords, so I would just delete the, in the deferment program.
Irrespective of the borrower's eligibility for participation in the low interest rate program.
Yeah.
That is the resolution, and I've proof, uh, proofread it along the way, so...
Okay.
So moved?
No, 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 that's not how we're doing it. So we'll now proceed to item eight-three on the new business, Resolution twenty dash forty-five, to consider and act upon a resolution to participate in a tax collection modification program pursuant to the governor's executive order Seven S Six. Uh, Mr. O'Rourke, please introduce the resolution for consideration.
Sean O'Rourke, I hereby introduce Resolution twenty dash forty-five entitled Resolution to, to participate in a tax collec, collection modification program pursuant to the governor's executive order Seven S Six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that, DeeDee, is that you?
Jen.
Oh, Jen Aguilar, okay, you both sound alike to me on the phone.
Thanks.
Uh, okay, Mr. O'Rourke, is there a motion? So Jen Aguilar seconded. Mr. O'Rourke, is there a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Jen again?
That's Jen, yeah, Jen.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a roll call vote on the waiver of the reading of the motion. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Jen Aguilar, aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Aye, Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
And Enid Lapelis, aye. The motion passes unanimously. On the floor for discussion, uh, for discussion is Resolution twenty dash forty-five. While we have had discussion on this matter and on the agenda, I'll now call on each member of town council by name for any further discussion on the motion. DeeDee Martin?
No further discussion.
Jennifer Aguilar?
No further discussion.
Jason Mauer?
No further discussion. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on this.
Terry Rooney?
No discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jonathan Formicella?
No discussion.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, no discussion.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, no further discussion.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, no discussion.
And myself, no discussion. I'll now call for a roll call vote on the adoption of Resolution twenty dash forty-five. DeeDee Martin?
DeeDee Martin, aye.
Jen Aguilar?
Aye.
Jason Mauer?
Jason Mauer, aye.
Terry Rooney?
Terry Rooney, aye.
Jonathan Formicella?
Jonathan Formicella, aye.
Tony Scott?
Tony Scott, aye.
Sean O'Rourke?
Sean O'Rourke, aye.
Kevin Reed?
Kevin Reed, aye.
Enid Lapelis, aye. The motion passes nine to zero. There being no further business, I hate...
Madam Chair?
Ms. Lapelis? Oh, this is First Selectman John. I said before you, Jared, I wanted to just recognize that, uh, spent an awful lot of time, uh, researching this. A lot of hours went into it, uh, with a, a huge team. Uh, Deb, uh, Heim put a lot of work into this, uh, as well as I know the entire Board of Finance, uh, represented by Mr. Manjos. And, uh, despite the, uh, perceived lightning-fast efficiency of our town attorney, I want to assure you that, uh, there were many hours spent, uh, understanding that this was a unique, uh, dilemma, and that we had to prepare a resolution where we had options before us. And I know that I spent a lot of time with Frank, and he spent a lot of time, uh, ensuring that he was prepared to go in, uh, any direction, uh, that the council wanted to, and he had, uh, a lot of that prepared in advance, which allowed it, allowed him to, uh, finalize them. I, I want to thank him for, uh, preparing for all the different, uh, possibilities. And, uh, just wanted to, again, thank everyone for all their hard work on this, uh, and thank the council for their time and consideration. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Keller. So there being no further business, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned at, uh, eight twenty-seven.
Madam Chair, I think someone else was, uh, trying to comment.
Yeah, oh, but they thought, eh, I'll let them talk. Who is it?
It's Jen Aguilar.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Lito. I just, I actually, yeah, we're adjourned. It's, it, it's okay.
Well, it's gonna be at eight, uh, twenty-eight. Okay, so say what you like, Mrs. Aguilar.
I actually just wanted to know if you would give me the opportunity to ask the First Selectman a question about our Monday, uh, town council meeting. Could cancel?
Let, let him speak, of course. Go ahead, Mr. Keller.
I, I, I just wanted to, um, voice my concern about not having a town council meeting, Mr. Keller. Cause I just thought it was important to ha, to continue having town council meetings, even if we, this would be the only thing that would have been on the agenda, even just for updates on the town. And I just wanted to know the reason why we're canceling it.
But see, it couldn't be because, we, we had to get in by April twenty-fifth in the meet, our town council meeting, Mondays to twenty-seventh.
But we had, we had voted on, on rescheduling it to the twenty-seventh.
I think what...
Go ahead, Mr. Keller, I'm sorry.
First Selectman Keller, I think what Ms. Lapelis is referring to is that, uh, the council would be unable to vote on this on Monday, the twenty-seventh, and still be in compliance with the governor's executive order to make a decision by the twenty-fifth. Uh, in regards to Monday's meeting, uh, I simply informed the chair that I had no matters that were of a urgent or time sensitive nature, uh, for the council to act upon, uh, and asked her, her decision if she wished to cancel the meeting, uh, as we've been doing for, uh, all boards and commissions that don't have any urgent or time-sensitive matters. But certainly, uh, this, uh, you know, council members are certainly free to request the chair to call a meeting if they just, you know, if they feel it's necessary. Um, I'm not sure what, uh, matter is you're referring to, uh, Jennifer, you know, wanting to have a general update.
Yeah, just, I think just general updates, because I know, um, Board of Ed has been having their meetings every other week. They had a meeting, yes, Monday. I've lost track of days. Um, I know Board of Finance is having their meeting, but of course, they're in the middle of budget. And I just thought it was, it's important to keep having the meetings and keep us and the public updated as to what's going on in the town. Because I, I, I just feel a little disconnect as to, you know, if I, if I don't go on to the town website, then I don't know, and I do every single day, but I don't know that everybody does. It's just...
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
I might add to that, Jason Mauer. Uh, the, the one thing that I, I would like to see, uh, as a part of an update is, uh, we, we granted, and rightfully so, granted, the First Selectman emergency powers to, uh, enter into contracts, enter into, uh, agreements, uh, is some form of update as to what agreements have been entered into that, at basically any matters that would have normally gone before council, just an update as to what has happened with those matters. Um, and whether it's having, making sure that we have all of our regular scheduled meetings in an update, or just know that we don't want to cancel all of them, uh, so that we can get some form of update as to what has happened, uh, in between those meetings with respect to any... in between those meetings with respect to any items that would have normally been under the purview of council.
Understood. I believe I did provide that at the last meeting, and certainly, it's the intention. The next time there's a council meeting, you'll have that. Any additional, you know, there have been a couple of other items that would certainly be included in the next meeting as well. And I certainly have no issue if the chair wishes to, you know, wishes to call a meeting.
I'll take you with us. We had nothing really important to do. We'll wait until, I think it's May, I don't know, it'll be May 11. I think on May 10, 10 will be the next meeting. So any more discussion?
Justice, this is Councilman Terry Rooney. I just want to recognize we are post-adjournment, correct, currently?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so the meeting is over, and we called the adjournment at 8:28, so I guess we're through. Good evening, and thank you for coming.